This meeting is being held in accordance with the schedule of meetings adopted at the organizational meeting held January 6th through 2020. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Kenilworth Board of Education has been provided to the News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Union Leader. A copy's been filed with the Kenilworth Borough Clerk, has been posted in the Board Office, Kenilworth Borough Hall, Brerly and Harding Schools, as is provided by the Open Public Meetings Act. Can everyone please stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call?
Biner.
Here.
Braun.
David.
Here.
Drogen.
Here.
Habether.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Ladati.
Panichi.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Yep, Quorum.
Okay. We can proceed. First item, receiving of the minutes of the secretary from January 6th and January 13th. Does anyone have any comments, questions, concerns about the minutes? If not, can I have a motion to accept or approve?
Move.
Okay. A motion made by Mr. Habether, seconded by Dr. Panichi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reading and acceptance of monthly correspondence. Mr. Gennella.
We have a couple items this evening. We have a letter to Diane Westbrook from the 11th Hour Rescue, letter thanking Mrs. Westbrook and Bruins, the care members for fundraising efforts to support displaced animals in rescues. We have an invitation from Michelle Van Steenaker to the Board of Education regarding the middle school plays, which is Cinderella this year on February 21st and February 22nd.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the monthly correspondence?
Accept.
Okay.
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Mrs. Drogen, seconded by Dr. Panichi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Next up is our superintendent's report and presentations.
Good evening. To help introduce this month's student spotlight and share some advances we're making in our STEM program, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you, Ms. Dawn. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all tonight. As many of you know, we have a brand new STEAM room over where our media center used to be. And it's just a really amazing place for kids to come and do projects, to learn about all kinds of things that I know I didn't know about before I learned about them this year. And tonight, we have a few of our very best STEAM students with us, along with Mrs. Gogor and Mrs. Griffin, and they're going to do a little display about robots. Later on, I'll be highlighting the STEAM program in my budget, so this is a little prelude to that. So, Mrs. Gogor, Mrs. Griffin, come on up.
You're very welcome.
Good evening. I'm Karen Gogor. This is Grace Ann Griffin. Together, we run the media center over at Harding. In the media center, we are trying to assist our students in becoming good digital citizens, creative thinkers, problem solvers, and avid learners. We want our students to be comfortable with technology, not just to play with it, but to use it to solve problems and possibly create new things. Throughout the month of December, students in all grade levels were introduced to coding. Mrs. Griffin pushed into classrooms and used code.org and a variety of unplugged lessons to introduce the concept of coding. In the media center, students in grades one and two learned to code our robot Dash using a laptop and colored blocks of code. Students in grades three and four worked with Ozobots. They used both colored markers and code, like a color code that they created, and Blockley on the laptop to code the robots. Students in grades five and six worked with our robot Sphero. Sphero robots are the most complex that we have to use. After practicing how to code them, they determined the heading, duration, and speed a Sphero would need to travel successfully through a maze. We have chosen three students to demonstrate how each of these robots work. These three students immediately came to mind when we were asked to choose students to demonstrate our robots. All three seemed to be very interested in coding, learning what the robots are capable of, and coding the robots to do more than just the given task. Arya Shah is a second grader at Harding in Mrs. Schmidtberg's class, and he is going to demonstrate how to code our robot Dash to act as a snowplow. Mateo Remandi is a third grader, and he used markers to create a coded path for the Ozobot today. He came into the media center and created a path. He's going to explain to you his path and show you how his Ozobot works. And lastly is Kevin Maedoodu. He will be coding a Sphero to follow a small path on the floor. It's a mini version of what we did in class, and we hope you enjoy their demonstrations. Arya, you want to go first? How about we move out here? Do you want to show them? You want to stand up and show them what you've got?
So I got Dash, and I'm going to be coding him with the snowballs, and we make him into a snowpack.
It's okay. He knows where the camera is.
So he's lining up blocks of code. He's connecting Blockley, colored blocks of code, in line on his laptop that's connected to Dash in order to direct it to plow the snowballs. You can do it again. You can do it again. Just push the plow down and run again.
And then just run your code again.
Very good. Good job, Arya.
Great job.
Can you get Dash to come by and do my driveway?
Can I do the town streets? We'll do the same street.
Very good job.
Very good job.
You're right up and down the same street.
Do you want to just show them what like Blockley is? Because not everyone's going to even know what that is. So basically, he gives a set of directions, and it's in Blockley, and it will tell them how far to move forward, and there's, they have drop-down boxes where they have to move the numbers based on what they want to do, the speed they want to go, so in case we don't know what Blockley is now. Because we're saying it like...
Can you turn it around real quick this way?
Saying that, yeah.
Okay.
So it uses a set of directions.
Very cool.
Okay. You want to just tell them what like Blockley is? Because not everyone's going to even know what that is. So basically, he gives a set of directions, and it's in Blockley, and it will tell them how far to move forward, and there's, they have drop-down boxes where they have to move the numbers based on what they want to do, the speed they want to go, so in case we don't know what Blockley is now. Because we're saying it like...
Right. Could you turn it around real quick this way?
Saying that, yeah.
Okay.
So it uses a set of directions.
Very cool.
Okay. You want to tell them? Tell you what you're going to turn.
This is a Ozobot, and to calibrate, you have to put it on a black dot, and then you will have to hold it for two seconds. These are the color sheets to code it to make it do random stuff, and it will make it go faster, it will make it go slower, it will do random stuff, and you can use colors to make it. And this is going to be the path that I'm going to do with my Ozobot, and this is how it goes.
So now, did you draw that path yourself using the different colored markers to match up with the segments on the chart?
Yes.
Good job, Mateer.
So he tailored it to change speed, to slow down, pause, and to zigzag.
Like the snail dose versus the nitro boost, huh?
Right, so they do different things based on how you code it.
Very cool.
Good job, Mateer.
These robots will also code it with a laptop. They calibrate it by holding it up to the laptop, and the color code is transferred into the bottom of the robot, so they also learn to use Blockley code on these robots as well. Are you ready, Kevin?
Kevin, you're doing yours on the floor, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is a Sphero, and it moves when you put different blocks on a computer.
He's got to connect it first.
So you have to start a program. You have to aim it to make sure it's a little red light.
To the back. These robots have like a gyroscope in them. You can't just turn them to get the correct heading. You have to use the laptop to aim it and a protractor to determine direction.
You have to pick your speed and how long it's going to go for.
Took off a bathroom. He's using the protractor to determine his degree for heading.
You have to pick your speed and how long it's going to go for.
Took off a bathroom. He's using the protractor to determine his degree for heading. the computer technology. Mrs. Gogor was just saying a lot of times it's trial and error as well.
Right, and so while he's setting it back up, a lot of this is exactly trial and error, and then they have to fix it and go back, but they're learning that mistakes are okay. There is no wrong answers, and they know that they just have to keep working at it. You can see how he's determined. He's like, wait, that didn't work. I'm going to go back. So we're trying to get them into that mindset of thinking.
There we go.
Yeah. And again, if you look on it, you can see that it deals with degrees and directions, so there's a lot of math that's going into this.
Boys, I'm very proud of you, and parents, thank you for bringing the kids out tonight. They did a great job. And thank you, Mrs. Gogor, Mrs. Griffin.
Can those build Adirondack chairs, Mrs. Gogor? Can those build Adirondack chairs?
Next year. That's in the budget. We're going to get some.
Approved.
Yeah, for, just for your steps. Guys, we've got a picture. We've got a picture. You've got to come back with a picture.
They just ran away on you there.
They're late through the gym. You know, you never let them have pictures when you're going to put them on. Their session ends at eight. They're rushing to the gym. Kevin, do you guys want a picture?
Go ahead. Yes.
Maybe bring Dash up, Mrs. Gogor. He's so colorful.
Is he dark?
There we go.
Well, that's a good shot.
That's a great shot. He is tall. That was a good job, guys. That's a real good shot.
It's your chance to escape if you want, yes.
Thanks for coming. Great job.
Like I said, bring Dash by when the snow falls, okay?
But it's rampant. It was, we just closed it.
Yeah, never ends.
Bye, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so in my Friday update to you, I presented information around an update to our district goals, and I have those printed for you here. I thought it would be timely to share just one or two highlights per goal as a general entree into the conversation about first round budgeting. So of the five goals, you have updated sort of actionable items there that the team has taken to advance our efforts in these five areas, right? So the first goal is around a multi-tiered system of supports, so interventions and instruction to meet the needs of struggling learners. We realize district-wide, we have a lot of work to do in that area, but we're taking small, measured steps, and you can see some updates on pages one to four. Goal two has to do with embracing and wrapping our arms around more future-ready practices district-wide, so some of which you just saw, right? A greater emphasis on STEM learning and design challenges, increase of technology via anytime, increased anytime, anywhere access for Brerly students next year, and some of those updates on District Goal Two begin on page five. On page seven, you'll see some updates around communication and collaboration. So some highlights there include updates to our website, the creation of a Friday folder, more regular district and building updates sent via school messenger. On page nine, you'll see some updates around health and wellness, so physical safety. Those updates are confidential, of course, but lots of work is articulated there around social, emotional learning. And then the last goal has to do with professional learning, and some of those updates begin on page 12. You'll be hearing more about our professional learning plans via the budget presentation, but trying to take small, measured steps towards making professional development more teacher-driven, more heuristic in nature. So I'll continue to present updates to you periodically, but those are updates for the first six months of school.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to use that as my superintendent's report, but I have the HIB report for you here. Just to walk you through this packet, right? The first page is a monthly HIB results report for Harding across the year. The second page is Brerly's Year at a Glance HIB results. There are four cases investigated in January. One case at Brerly is still open as it was begun on January 31st. Two cases were founded, and one was unfounded. You'll be voting on those results next month. The third and fourth pages of the packet provide more granular level information on Brerly's January investigations that I just referenced. Later in the meeting, you'll be voting on the December HIB findings I shared with you last month. To summarize for December, there were no reports of HIB at Harding. At Brerly, for the month of December, there was one founded case and two unfounded cases. You'll be voting to affirm, deny, or modify these results later in the meeting as part of Resolution Number 23. On the last two pages are the usual. The penultimate page is the monthly suspension report for January, and the last page is January's enrollment report. Happy to answer any questions about this.
The only question I have, when we look at it, we said that we had two that were founded, but when we look under the measures taken, I'm not seeing anything marked off for measures taken.
What page is that on, Miss Smith?
The HIB results for Brerly?
Yeah.
The January column?
Yeah, that might have just been an exclusion that was accidental. I could follow up to get that data to the board.
Sure.
My apologies. I will send that out on Friday.
Any other questions?
A quick question on one. So when it says no action taken, then if, I guess there was comments made about female student, it says appearance, weight, gender, that's the second one. When it says no action taken, is that because the student dropped it, or like what will lead to no action taken?
That could be for a variety of reasons, but since we have the admin here, do you want to talk about that? That's the target.
Because it's reported in Genesis and not necessarily in chapter? So that could be one of the reporting mechanisms, so it might not show up on that actual report?
Sure.
Because it's run in a different way? So it might just need to be updated in the system?
Gotcha.
That could be why it's not reflected, because...
So the targets, right, there wouldn't be action taken? The accused?
There can still be action taken even for a target which is usually resulted in remediation following the guidance council. Action doesn't necessarily mean a physical action.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else? HIB? Moving on.
We're good to go with that budget.
Okay. So we're up to our fiscal year '21 Phase 1 Budget Review slash Presentation. Mr. Gennella is up.
Starting the budget process publicly, behind the scenes, we've been doing this since October. The administration's been putting together their budgets from the bottom up with the staff. They presented it, submitted it to Mr. Arlington and I in December, and in January, we had the opportunity to review the budgets individually with each one of the administrators and pay close attention to items such as duplications in the budget across disciplines and buildings, as well as looking for efficiencies. The January review that we did did not prioritize or put the budget in context with the entire budget. The administration is currently aligning the budget to our educational goals. Future adjustments will probably be warranted, but it was an opportunity for the Finance Committee to get into detail with the administrators. The Finance Committee had the opportunity to review the budget essentially line by line on January 29th and February 4th, and they were able to justify their rationale and their proposals to the Board at that time. This evening, we're going to have the opportunity to hear from each one of the administrators regarding their budgets, and they're going to be giving you some highlights of their budgets that we, as an administration and as a Finance Committee, felt would be warranted for you as the full Board, as well as the public to hear. These things are sometimes new programs or updates on some other programs, but I hope you find it interesting. First up is Mr. Miller, who will talk about athletics.
Okay, a few items that I would like to highlight. The first one up there are the Guardian helmet covers for football. We utilized them this year. I just wanted to sort of give an update on how they performed. This year, if we look at stats and statistics when it comes to head injuries, two years ago, before we started using the Guardian helmet covers, we had two kids who suffered minor concussions during the week of practice. This year, knock on wood, that just passed, we had zero. A lot of it is to those helmet covers. Basically, what they are is they're, they're sort of like, almost like a bumper, you know, just to use an example. Basically, it's a cap that we wear on top of our helmet that is rubberized, which eliminates solid contact, head-to-head solid contact. A lot of the contact, if any, is made with the helmet. It's sort of, you know, deflects it, and the impact isn't as great in the, especially the crown of the head. The impact isn't as great. So they've, this year, they were great for us. They do have an eight to 10-year shelf life, so we're in year one, so these things will have around for quite a bit more, and hopefully, they continue to do the job that they did for us this past year. Second thing on there is weight room equipment. There's a rather large piece of weight room equipment that the PhysEd Department would like to add this year. With our fitness program in PhysEd and the way that that's been progressing, this equipment, it's a power rack, if you're not familiar with what it is. It basically is a large stand that will allow us to have eight students work out at once at the same time around a sort of a station, if you would. The piece of equipment's about $2,600, $2,800. It's a sturdy piece of equipment. It's going to last us, probably will all be gone, and it'll still be here. But just looking at what the PhysEd Department is doing now up here at the middle high school, we have probably, I'd say, 120 kids that go into the weight room throughout the course of the day, from seventh grade all the way up to seniors in high school, and then after school with our intramural program, we have probably about another 35 to 40, as well as the track team that's always in there. So you're looking at probably about 160 of our student athletes and regular students that are in that room daily. So that weight room does need some major upgrades, and this is definitely a step in the right direction to help us with the amount of kids that go in there on a daily basis. Any questions?
Are you looking at purchasing new additional helmet covers? Because you said you had a batch here.
No, we have 60 of them. We ordered 60 last year. We used 51 this year, so we have nine that are still brand new, but those other 51 still have about seven, eight years left on their shelf life.
That was more interesting than basketballs. Next up.
This is Jabaro. Would you like to come up and talk about your program?
So one of the many things that we've been discussing with teachers is what's called flexible seating arrangements, non-traditional classroom environments. Many of you grew up... Many of you grew up, you had the typical desks all in a row, teacher's desk at the front of the room, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to increase the ability of students to have different types of seating arrangements that are more conducive to their learning. And they can take many different forms. There can be modular desks that rise and fall. They can be beanbag chairs, for instance, in an English classroom that facilitate reading better, independent reading and things like that. And you can have a myriad of different types of arrangements, even in the same room. And the benefits are enormous. So one of the main benefits is choice. Outside of school is a dynamic, you know, fast-paced and ever-changing world full of choices, and that includes the choice of where you learn best, you know, and where you can get your work done best. And so how can we expect our students to solve problems and make choices independently if we're constantly making the choices for them, including having them sit in these rows? Movement, children need to move. Sitting for 55 minutes in the same seat is not conducive to many of them for learning, and so flexible seating allows for movement that's natural, that facilitates instruction and learning better. And physical activity is linked to higher academic performance, better health, and improved behavior for students. Community, traditional desks can make students fairly territorial. They'll sit in the same seat, they don't want to move. When you have different types of flexible seating arrangements, it includes students to move and to share. And one of the biggest ones is collaboration. It allows students to quickly and easily pair up, work in small groups to do different project-based learning, and engage in even group discussions without having to move heavy desks to establish eye contact. There's also a matter of comfort. Not every student fits in a traditional-sized desk. We have some, you know, students that are, you know, that don't fit into those small desks, and it makes it difficult and it's uncomfortable for some of them to try and fit inside these desks. And so, you know, we're trying to open up this area that it's more comfortable for students to learn, that's more conducive to learning. A 2012 study from the University of Minnesota found that students participated 48% more in discussions in a classroom with collaborative group seating versus the traditional lecture-style seating. And so instead of kids that like choose to sit in the back and try and hide, this encourages for students to, for the teacher to move around the classroom more and encourage all students to learn. And so we've put into our budget a few classrooms to start that have, that want to do these flexible classroom seating arrangements because they believe it'll change the way that they do lessons. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Curriculum instruction, professional development, and textbooks. Mr. Luciani.
This is a very quick presentation as I go to the hospital. Good to see everybody. Just some of the four major areas. First one was obviously the district philosophy on professional development. One of the big changes is really transforming into professional learning, not so much on the development side. That's been a push towards, which supports collaboration, obviously professionalism and experimentation. There's four main areas of that that I highlighted. I wish to highlight at least the research-based standards, which is where the staff participates in research-based professional learning. Some examples of that are the Orton-Gillingham program and tools in the mind. Job embedded structures, rather than occasional in-service days that teachers are working. Instead, they're working with coaches and other PD personnel with them in their classroom. Examples of that are the middle school reading classes. Teachers have participated in modeling sessions with the IRLA coach, and Go Math will work with coaches to assist with them in the adoption of the Go Math program in Grade 8, which is for next year. Team learning, continuation of PLCs and expanding that. Ed Camp, which Mr. Arlington introduced this year for our full-day PD, which went over very well. And then the introduction to, and still in the conversation, but working out the details of peer-to-peer observation opportunities. If I, last part is focusing on student work, where we want to examine student work to develop a clear understanding of what contributes to their successes and assist those teachers to choose appropriate strategies and resources to bolster student achievement. And one example of that is under the analysis of what we currently do for evidence statements, benchmarks, and our map testing. Second part was proposed new textbook adaptation, adoptions, I should say. They're not animals. U.S. History 1. Basically, our titles were purchased in 2010, but were not, they were purchased without the Common Core adoption. So the proposed new titles are designed to help prepare students, including timed tests of best practices, curriculum standard expectations, and a technology component with the online portion. Ethnic Studies will be a new course for the 2021 school year. Text-only Ethnic Studies will provide, plus the book and the online component where available. World Cultures, again, through the textbook and digital. World Cultures is a course that was added this school year for our middle school students. National Geographic textbook requests provided. Some examples, real-life experience with videos, interactive whiteboard lessons, map and photo labs, tools to create media presentations, and more importantly, the textbook is written at a middle school readability level. On the Spanish AP side, again, from 2006, a great year, but a little old for Spanish books, required update for our textbooks. Same book, updated edition, and the same thing with the AP Psychology, the same as the AP Spanish. On the Math Foundation's Math 180, Skills-Based Intervention System for our struggling math students, which we're going to offer for the Math Foundation courses for the 2021 year. It also reinforces skills learned in the Go Math program that work in conjunction with each other. It is the same company that has both. And finally, for the last one, final phase of Go Math implementation, we will be fully implemented from K to 8, starting next year in 2021. So we're very happy about the progression and learnedness of our students as they move through that math system. The final part, I know Mr. Jabaro was going to share with also, and so please jump in if I miss anything, along with Mr. Arlington, impact on vision of one-on-one Chromebook initiatives through grades 7 through 12. Mr. Arlington has been processing this for a while. We met numerous times. We put together an initial kind of handbook or kind of a fact sheet regarding Chromebook use for next year, the ins and outs, requirements, expectations. Mr. Gennella has been working diligently, trying to find out, Mr. Rodriguez, something about the servicing of those Chromebooks. The goal right now is to have Chromebooks for all students, grades 7 to 12, with the incorporation of PD, which we have to infuse once we kind of figure out where we want to be with certain areas. One of the Ed Camps and one of the trainings we had for PD on the 17th was related to Google itself, with a basic model, a medium level, and then a kind of a third level with Google Classroom. So we have more and more teachers interested in that, more and more teachers transitioning into that, and so we're very excited about kind of the challenge that 2021 brings us, with really a one-to-one process for us here at David Brerly Middle and High School. Can help anybody with any questions?
Would the Chromebook initiative lead to us having to upgrade our Wi-Fi or any...
We're exploring that right now. Wi-Fi is pretty good. We're actually more looking at its bandwidth to see what the, if we have enough bandwidth. Right now, we have a gigabyte, so we're exploring 2 gigabyte, 5 gigabyte, 10 gigabyte options to see. We think that the one is enough, but I remember when we had a dial-up service, so it's always progressing, so that's one of the things that we're looking at. We feel that the Wi-Fi will be sufficient.
Are we figuring on having a place set up with a tech guy during the course of the day when, as the students are running into the problems and they have to go to tech to get...
We have some injuries built into the initial handbook regarding kind of a process for students to go to the main office regarding an issue with a Chromebook, and obviously, we'll have to have some replacements for kids that, new kids coming in, obviously, before they can get their official one, and maybe some of their issues if things are broken or cracked and things. So we have things like that built in. Mr. Jabaro is going to meet with a committee, I believe, next week.
We have about 12 teachers that volunteered that want to be in a focus group, to look at the handbook, to go to some initial PD, and to kind of spell out some of their questions and concerns so that we can address all of the different, you know, frequently asked questions that will come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is guidance and assessment.
So some of the things that we're working on, and I want to start out by saying thank you for some of the CELL initiatives that we already have in place, which are really quite fantastic with the second step. So we do want to build on what we already have, which is so great. So some of the consideration and ideas we have are, and I'm going to start with the student, mental health and CELL. Our district has recognized the essential value to the mindset of wellness, and the second step program does start to make the discussion and help. We'd like to further that into mindful space and practices to teach the teachers how to teach the students. So when we look at the literature, it says the spaces that we could create for students and teachers were recommended by Dr. Elias and Dr. Scott. There will be manipulatives, yoga mats, and other practical items for students and teachers to use in practice wellness. The guidance also has other ideas as well as these specific spaces, but there are also events. So one of the events that we're planning for that would take a little bit of budget is a wellness fair, where we could have speakers. We could also have community efforts, partners, and practitioners pairing to bring some of those practices into a fair once a year. So those are the initiatives in regards to social-emotional learning and programming. The second thing is an AVID program and college readiness. So AVID is a program that's a compartmentalized elective that would give some self-esteem and build independence for college writing skills. It brings teamwork exploration and focuses students in a cohort model to have these students learn more about how to be college-ready. It focuses on the BC student and their college goals, as well as their career goals. They have found in research-based projects that high schools that use this nationwide get an increase in not only college readiness and four-year attendance, but also in retention and continuing on in college beyond that. So the program would include curriculum. It would also include books, as well as a teacher that would head up the cohort. And so again, we'd be focusing on BC students and raising their value set and potential for college. It starts out with one class in a freshman setting, and then each year it grows to, you know, then sophomore year and freshman year, freshman, sophomore, and junior, and then freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior. So it does grow as time goes by. The third thing up there is the NJIT Dual Enrollment Partnership, which is a proposal that would take an existing Brerly course that would allow NJIT to come in and lay their curriculum on top of ours, marrying them together, and then that would give the students a chance to purchase credits at a reduced rate. That would give the students a significant savings, but it would also allow students to accumulate credits at a four-year college rather than at the community college level, and it would be allowing them to take these courses in our school, leading to credit purchases. What is nice is that you could elect to take the course whether you purchase the credits or not, and they would be courses that are already taught by our very skilled staff at our school. And we do like that cooperative environment, having our teachers being able to become professors. So right now, we haven't nailed down which course we would choose, but that would be something we'd pilot with one course and then hopefully have it grow as time goes by. Does anybody have any questions?
With the AVID course, you're planning on that being an elective that students could choose to take or something that would be forced on them?
Well, it's an interesting prospect, but the idea of it is it's a cohort, and it's not something that would necessarily be forced, but it would be something that they would want to choose. Students that participate, it's almost like a cheerleading squad, how amazing it becomes. Some schools have it that it's their class leader or their class advisor that heads that up. So I've never seen students that really, once they see the orientation to it, that they wouldn't want to participate because it really is that exciting.
I have a question too about AVID. So with the AVID, because we've had it for 20-plus years where I am, so there's, the kids that are in AVID are supposed to be taking AP and honors classes. So that would mean, you know, would that coordinate with our schedule at the high school in terms of giving them the elective and then the AP and honors class?
I think we're starting out with the freshman courses and then building and growing. So I think the first year, it's, that's not the freshman orientation to it, but we're growing. We are adding courses that might be AP potential courses for freshmen, like we have the AP Computer Science course that is becoming an attractive item for us to add in for our underclassmen. But at this time, the AVID program, we'd be piloting it with one cohort, and then hopefully it would be growing. And yes, that would be the hope, would be for them to take that more relevant approach to learning and then tie that into, wow, it could really make a difference for my future. And now I have, I never thought I was going to go to college, and now I'm sure I'm going to go to college.
And the teacher that would be teaching it, are they going to be AVID-trained?
Yes.
There's a specific sequence for every year that you have to have. So is that person going to have access to have training? Like if one teacher's going to teach it, they need to be trained in at least four-plus years of the different trainings that they offer. Is that something you talked about, you know, considering?
That's actually part of the program. That's why the expense is a little greater than, when you look at the original budget proposal, when you look at the actual dollar amount, the reason why the core course is so expensive, it's not the materials, it's not our, it's not our teachers, it's actually that training, which is, it's the costly piece. So that, that is, that would be a requirement of that program. Thank you for that question. That was a really good one.
Don't forget that our students, we can schedule them for 40 credits a year, starting at each year of the school, and they don't really need 120 credits to graduate.
No, that I understand, but what I'm asking is, the program itself, if you, like...
The rigor is going to increase.
The rigor is that those kids that take that elective are supposed to be enrolled in AP and honors classes. So that was what I was asking, are they going to have AP and honors classes in with that elective course? Because in the elective course, there's a specific curriculum each week, and there's a two-day tutoring session, usually it's Tuesday, Thursday, and that's where they're supposed to be...
Enriched.
...college tutors or whatever it is to help them in those tough areas. So I was just wondering if that was part of the conversation and you, you know...
I thank you for that question because I think that that's exactly what we're targeting, is we're really trying to build, build that knowledge base and increase that capacity for learning. So, I mean, that's our hope.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate that you're familiar with it, so I really thank you for that.
The NJIT partnership, is that something new? Do we do something similar with CAIN or UCC?
We do something similar with UCC. Actually, UCC, it's not exactly the same because they don't marry with our curriculum. They actually have the Academy course that grooms our students to collect credits to go to the community college, and that is held during our open campuses. So in that effort, they do or are able to purchase credits, but again, that's not laying it over our existing or using our talent. It's using UCC's professors that come here. Our UCC professor last semester came from Connecticut and had a great deal of difficulty getting to campus here, and this would be ideal because our teachers here are readily accessible to the students in their activity period, and they also, believe it or not, many of them have already taught for NJIT in their summer program and/or at their campus. So we do have some teachers that are experienced as college professors already, and then we also have others that would qualify as we grow the program. We have some teachers that, they said that they would even consider teachers that teach AP consistently, so they've opened up other avenues and not been so narrow-minded with that as well. So I think we have plenty of staff that could man that up, and as I said, we're going to pilot it with one course, and then the hope is to grow that program in subsequent years. So thank you for that question. That was a really good one. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Harding Elementary Program. Ms. Murphy.
Hello again, everyone. As I was sitting there listening to everybody talk, I just wanted to mention our supervisors who won't be getting up this evening, Mrs. Bound and Ms. Canty, and they're the boots on the ground really in terms of our curriculum and our training, and I just really appreciate their help and knowledge in helping us out across the district and especially at Harding. So I just wanted to thank them for that. The first thing that I'm updating is our STEM program, and you saw a little bit of that tonight. I think it was May or, May or June last year, Mr. Arlington walked upstairs to the library with Mrs. Gogor, Mrs. Griffin, and myself, and that was when it was the old Harding Library, which was wonderful in its own right, but it was time for a change. We've been waiting for a change, and very quickly, between Mr. Arlington's efforts and Mr. Gennella, we changed that into a steam room. And of course, Mrs. Gogor, Mrs. Griffin, I'm so glad that they stepped up and they wanted to embrace this new program. So many beautiful things with, the kids are so excited about going, you couldn't sign them up all night long and they'd probably go. And also, something that really touched us was that this holiday season, a lot of our kids went home and for Christmas... kids went home and for Christmas or for Hanukkah, whatever their holiday celebration was, they wanted robots, they wanted steam toys or steam projects and all that. So, we know that it's really connecting to the families as well as just to our curriculum. So, I think you probably saw a lot tonight about what the kids are doing. As I said before, it probably looks simple, but it's really a lot of mathematics and computer science behind what they're learning. I was even in a kindergarten class with Mrs. Griffin where she was doing a coding lesson hands-on, paper and pencil, to prepare them for the next day when they were going up to the lab. So, I appreciate your support for this program and everyone that made it happen. You'll see some things in the budget, of course, some materials we will need. A lot of them have been shifted to the title budgets. And Mrs. Gogar, you just got a big funding. Talk a minute about that.
Donors Choose?
Donors Choose.
Yes, we went, we did a Donors Choose, and we got eight new riddle stools for, for the media center because we didn't have enough, and they're expensive. They're about $80, $90 apiece for the stools, and we had people from Oregon, California, people right from Kalamazoo, and people from Roselle Park, and so, who donated. We raised over $800 and got eighteen stools. They just came today.
Wonderful.
We'll be working on thank you letters for that, and it's also a lesson in kindness. We've been explaining to them that, you know, people went out of their way to donate to them, so they're, they're very excited.
Thank you. Anybody have questions about the STEAM program? If you haven't, I'd love you to come over and see the room and get a chance to see everything in action. So, just let me know if you want to come over for a visit. And next is Language Arts. I'm going to start with the Orton-Gillingham program. This is a well-researched reading program that Mr. Arlington brought us to much excitement and success. We've been waiting many years to see success happening in our language arts area and with Ms. Kancy and with Mr. Arlington bringing forth the O.G., we're really seeing the results happen. Our K through 1 teachers have been trained. Our second grade teachers are going out in the summer. We have our interventionists, our BSI people also being trained, and already going in the classrooms mid-year, we're seeing an increase, a market increase in skills, skill levels than we saw this year, last, last year at this time. So, it's really, we're so excited about it, and one of the things that is so great about Orton-Gillingham, besides the program itself and how it's going to really help our kids read, is that our teachers have absolutely everything they need for the program. They were not used to having all the things they needed for programs, and in many, many years, we piecemeal things, but that's not the case. So, they're all trained. Our second grade teachers are going to be trained, and I think we're going to see some really good results. We really need to have our second graders reading before we send them upstairs, and I believe this is certainly the path to do that. Now, Ms. Kancy, would you like to talk about the units of study? Yeah, come on up, come on up, Ms. Kancy.
Just in touch on Orton-Gillingham, I want to thank you for your support that we were able to have so many teachers trained in such an important program, and I cannot wait to have this program move to the second grade and just see that consistency over the grade levels. So, now onto the school-wide units. This is part of the multi-year rollout. That is our hope, that over multiple years, teachers in K through 6 would receive new reading and writing units. That would include mentor texts, assessments, lessons, and new classroom library books. These units shift the focus of learning. For example, instead of learning a particular story such as The Three Little Pigs, students will learn main idea first. Then they'll go and practice main idea in different books based on what they can read and what they're most interested in. The program allows for differentiation to meet the needs of all learners because even though they're learning the same skill, they're learning it with a book that is personalized to them. This would be rolled out over multiple years. Our current program now, Reading Street, is a basal reader, so it requires every year that we purchase workbooks and tests on paper. That would be taken away, and instead, we could purchase trade books for the classroom and expose students to more genres and more books. We have been supporting teachers with meaningful professional learning throughout the year around some of this. Our third grade team is already piloting Reader's Workshop, and we have some teachers who are piloting units individually in their classrooms.
Any questions? So, our language arts budget looks a little different this year because of these new programs, but we really believe in them and we're excited about them and hope to show you some really good results soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, special education.
Hi. Special education code requires school districts to provide eligible students with a free, appropriate, public education in the least restrictive environment. Our work continues into next school year with several initiatives designed to enhance our ability to serve the individual needs of students so that they make meaningful progress while learning with, to the greatest extent feasible, their general education peers. For instance, our first objective is always the safety and well-being of students. A new partnership with Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare will facilitate the critical risk assessment screenings for students in crisis, links families with appropriate resources aligned with their health insurance or health insurance needs, and provides timely and highly relevant training for staff and parents alike. The expansion to the district's SOAR and ACE programs will allow us to provide more intense wraparound services, a flexible learning environment, and individualized supports for students, thereby meeting their needs in district rather than going out of district. And finally, students in district who have a need for more individualized support in transition to adulthood will benefit from a partnership with alternatives and agency providing job coaching and sampling opportunities right here in Kennelworth with our community partners and businesses. So, thank you for your continued support on these initiatives. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So, that is in a nutshell, the Phase 1 portion of our budget. Obviously, you have all the detail there. We're going to be continuing to review that. Next up for the Finance Committee and Personnel Committee are Phase 2 and 3. Phase 2 is the Salary portion or the Staffing portion. The Personnel Committee will be reviewing that on February 19th, and the Phase 3 portion of the budget, which is the School Business Administrator portion of the budget, the Finance Committee will be reviewing that on February 26th. Just prior to that, on February 25th, the Governor will be doing his annual Budget Address of the state, and then 48 hours after that, State Aid figures will be released. We are projected to have an increase in State Aid, but we've been projected in the past to have increases and we didn't get them. So, that is what Budget Address is all about. So, we will see that impact of that. The, after that, the Board will have the opportunity to review the budget and submit it to the Executive County Superintendent for technical review. We'll probably be doing that at the March 9th Board Meeting. And then between March 9th and the public hearing, which is April 29th, which is a long period of time, we have an opportunity to really get into the weeds and set our priorities, take a look at the tax impact, and look at all our revenues, compare them to our expenditures, and come up with a plan that hopefully meets the needs of the community, taxpayers, and the students of Kennelworth. So, that is our plan. On Friday, I sent out with the budget packet, the first budget update. I ask you to each have an opportunity, get a chance to review that, ask me any questions regarding it. There's a lot of detail in there regarding some of the challenges and some of the good things that are, we're looking at for the next budget year, the 2020, 21 budget year. So, if there's no other questions, any questions?
Questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Okay, we can move on to Report of Committees, Review and Resolutions, and Board Discussion. First up is Finance and Facilities. Mr. Ladati was ill and was not able to make tonight's meeting. Do you have anything?
Yes, I can report on his, his report. The committee, as I mentioned earlier, the committee met twice in January and February to review the budget. Most of the things that he was going to review, I've already reviewed, so I'll skip that portion of his report. And the committee encourages, he's asking to encourage you to read this budget update too. On February 26th, the committee will meet with the, committee will meet to review Phase 3. And let me see, on Friday, during windstorm, we sustained damage to the really relocatable classroom roof. Immediate steps were taken to ensure that no additional damage was incurred. A roofer made temporary repairs to the roof on Saturday, and myself and Mr. Caponegro met with the insurance adjuster this morning to review the claim. We are currently obtaining several quotes from roofers. At this point, it was both the opinion of the roofer and the adjuster that there was no loss of structural integrity to the building system and that classes could resume. However, tomorrow, our architect is coming out to affirm their opinions, and hopefully we will be back in there either later on tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday morning. So, that really was what he had to address.
Okay. And then, just from a resolutions perspective, resolutions 1 through 5 are basically the standard Finance Committee resolutions. Resolution 6 approves the rental of our facilities during the summer of 2020 for the Kevin Boyle Basketball Camp. 7 would approve the 2020 school district calendar. 8 is an agreement with Advantage ABA LLC Service Agreement to provide assessment services for one-student care, and I think that's it. Yep. Okay. Does anyone have any questions on Finance?
With the portables, how many classes do we still actually hold out there now?
Well, half classes are out there, and the SOAR program is out there as well. So, it's significant.
All right.
Especially SOAR program. Probably make do with half-class with the SOAR program. That's their...
Any other questions? No? Okay. We'll move on to Personnel. Mr. Haberther?
Thank you. There are 11 resolutions tonight. Resolution number 9 is the, is the Board of Education approving the hiring of Drew Vanderzee for Supervisor of Building and Grounds. Resolution number 10 is the, is the hiring of a K through 6 special education elementary teacher. Resolution number 11 is the approval of a webmaster, effective January 1st, I guess retroactive. Resolution number 12 is the approval of a JV baseball coach, athletic position. Resolution 13 approves volunteer coaching positions. Resolution number 14 is modification of a maternity leave absence, as is number 15 as well. Number 16 is, sorry, number 16 is also a maternity leave approval. Resolution number 17 is the approval of student teachers. Resolution number 18 is the approval of paraprofessional and lunch aids. And resolution 19 is the approval of substitute staff. And that is it for Personnel.
Anyone have any questions on Personnel? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to Curriculum and Instruction. Mrs. Zimmerman?
Okay, only four tonight. Resolution 20 is for presenter reimbursement for PD days, curriculum writing payment for resolution 21. Resolution 22 is curriculum adoption for the library-media program, creative writing, health, K to 6, and public speaking. And resolution 23, the HIB report for December. Resolution 24 is sitting there, but I'm assuming that's a mistake because it's a policy.
Right, thanks. Does anyone have any questions on curriculum?
I think about less than we did.
Okay. And we will move on to Policy. Mrs. Braun is not here this evening. There is one resolution, which is to adopt a policy and a regulation, number 1642, which has to do with earned sick leave law, and it looks like they're both mandated by the state. And I don't know, does anybody else have anything else under policy procedure? No? Okay. Then we can move on and we'll go on to, Vince, what about 25? We have to do, what is that?
That'd be a Personnel.
Personnel was, that was the additional teaching.
Section for Caplo.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Caplo is picking up an additional teaching period for the second half of the year.
Okay.
And that's necessitated...
It's driven by IEPs, I need for like intervention, Wilson reading for a small group of students.
So, that's an additional resolution, number 25, and I guess then we can move on to Old Business. Does anyone have anything for Old Business? Okay. Does anyone have anything for New Business?
I'd just like to bring up that my daughter, who's in the 7th grade, just completed her first rotation through the STEM program, absolutely had excellent things to say about it, so we're doing a very good job, and she's very excited about it, so. Thanks for sharing. Thank you to our teachers. Yes.
And the book fair this year, when I was a kid, it was very different, and the book fair was just, was great. I took Mateo, but it was great. It looked great too in the...
Thank you.
Last call for New Business. If not, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
I have a motion made by Mrs. Zimmerman, second by Mrs. Drogen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. The meeting is open to the public for comment. Board of Education sets the limit for public to speak at the board meeting to five minutes per person unless prior permission has been granted by the board. Would anyone like to state anything on the public record? If so, please step forward, state your name and address. Okay. Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
Motion to close the public.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Mr. Haberther, second by Mr. Biner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So, the meeting is closed to the public for comment, and we will move on to roll call of resolutions. Mr. Ginnella?
Yes. You have 25 resolutions on the agenda this evening. Do any of them need to be separated and voted on separately?
Guess not.
Biner?
Yes.
Drogen?
Yes.
Haberther?
Yes.
Jankowicz?
Yes.
Panici?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motions carry now.
Okay, great. Do we have closed-session items, Vince?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so then, you want to read the...
Yes. The resolve by the Board of Education, Board of Education meet, from which the public shall be excluded to discuss topics of the KEA negotiations, all units, contract negotiations, and contract, contract negotiation regarding and receive agreement with field part of Education.
Yes.
And matters, including attorney-client privilege, which private discussion is being and pending litigation, which private discussion is being held pursuant to Section 7b and a of the Public Communications Act. Matters under discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as final decisions are made, are made and voted upon.
Yeah, okay. Do I have a motion to go in a closed session?
Motion.
Okay, have a second? Okay, I have a motion made by Mrs. Drogen, second by Dr. Panici. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. The board is in closed session. We're back on. Okay, the board just concluded its closed session. No decisions were made, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Haberther, second by Mr. Biner. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? So carried. Meeting is adjourned.